Committee of the whole meeting for April twenty second to order. And Ms. Banks, please suspend taking a roll or do we need to do that?
I need to call a roll. There is no meeting.
All right, Ms. Banks, then please call a roll.
Ms. Moore, Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Yeah.
Ms. Jordan again as a few, Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Fratius.
Here.
Mr. Seiger.
Here.
We have five members present.
All right, so we have four items to consider at this meeting. So I'm going to start with Smooth Jazz Fest and all of them are exciting. Mr. Charette, did you want to say something or can we just turn it right over?
Turn it right over to Mr. Black. Thank you, Mr. Charette. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Charette, and members of the audience. I'm very excited to be here this evening to discuss a proposal to bring the Smooth Jazz Fest back to its rightful home, the city of Southfield. In a meeting arranged by the mayor's office on March twenty eighth, several city departments, including planning, business development, community relations, and parks and recreation, listened to a conceptual presentation by the gentleman that you will meet this evening. That feels that this signature event can make a successful return within the operational, security, and financial parameters indicated by the city. It is my pleasure to introduce Kenneth Marshall from WJZZ Digital.
Good evening, Mr. Marshall. Could you give us your name and business address for the record?
Kenneth Marshall, four one seven eight nine Mitchell is the business address, Illinois, Michigan, four eight three seven seven.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, Madam Mayor, Council, audience, it is an honor to be here to be able to present to you this evening. And bear with me, I hope I get the clicker thing right. So, yeah, that's... What, what again? All right, just want to, I want to discuss very quickly and go through this presentation about bringing the Smooth Jazz Fest back. I think it's an important event. I think it was an important event for ten years. And it's a fun event. This type of event brings people together, great music, hopefully great food, all that sort of stuff comes with this event. So I'm going to start from the beginning. I hope I don't, if I'm moving too rapidly, because I tend to roll through presentations very quickly to be efficient. A little bit about us, this is, this is part of a fourteen year journey. It started at the time when I was very irritated when they sold WJZZ. I was a big listener, big supporter of the station. It went away and little old me at the time thought, you know what, how can we bring this back? And so it literally, it literally kind of launched fourteen years ago. Fast forward a little bit, I got into the whole media business back in two thousand eleven, really took it seriously. We decided to do not terrestrial radio, but because of the onslaught of digital radio, we decided to go that direction. Simply because, first of all, worldwide focus, it's a lot easier, less costly, the certification process is simpler, and so we decided to move into the digital band. We started with the first station, which is WMMS Digital, which is Motor City Music Showcase Radio. That launched August first of two thousand eleven. Followed it with Motor City Gospel Showcase Radio. That launched October first of the same year, two thousand eleven. This process with the jazz station took a little bit longer. We did a ton of research on the demand for jazz in the area, both digitally, worldwide, and all that sort of stuff. And we decided, we're going to do Motor City Jazz Radio, and that's the original name. Now, how we got to WJZZ Digital was really up in my head, because for digital radio, they opened up the digital band for call letters, just like you have on terrestrial radio two years ago. And so, well, to win, literally, almost like saying, you know, the only thing they can say is no, is we applied for the digital call letters for WJZZ. Oddly enough, they were, they were available. The audience has grown in numbers to about a hundred thousand at the time of the presentation. It could be even more now, thirty-nine countries. We play indie and mainstream smooth jazz artists twenty-four seven. That's our domain at the bottom. And also, I don't know how many of you are familiar with TuneIn Network. You can get them on your iPad, on your iPhone, on your Android. You can get TuneIn everywhere, even on your desktop computer. And so that was the launching pad for all of this. Now, in all of the planning for the station, it was always a vision. Why don't we do a jazz fest in cooperation with this thing actually coming back? Makes sense. You generate buzz for the station, you do, you do a lot of things. The artist relations, build listenership, all that sort of stuff comes with this kind of thing. So it's a, you know what, less attempts to bring it back. And so just some preliminaries, we're looking at doing this Friday and Saturday, August ninth and tenth. And you see the gate opening times and all of that sort of stuff. I'm going to just move through that, because that stuff is self-explanatory. And we want to do it here. Now, a little bit of history and why Southfield. First of all, V ninety-eight point seven, who you may have been familiar with, who was owned by CBS Radio. Their format was changed, and so again, we see another, we see another jazz entity, just going by the wayside. And you have so many jazz lovers and listeners in the area. But they did this for ten years in a row. Very successful event, very successful station, and sometimes I ask myself, why did they go away? But format change. We had, or they had, a total of between three thousand and six thousand folks, depending on the year. We were able to gather the data that the last year was the largest attendance of six thousand. Why Southfield, there's several reasons. Number one, it's an established history with this event. I mean, it's anonymous. If you talk to anybody, they remember this. All the people we talked to, we did, we did unscientific stuff on Facebook, on Twitter. We put it out there and people immediately were like, I remember that. I went to that. It was a great event. Everyone had great feelings about this event. So that's one reason. Accessibility via freeway, because you've got to make a business decision. You want it to be easy for people to get to. And one of the most annoying things about events sometimes is parking. And that is the biggest thing. Real quick side story, show you what I'm talking about. I went to Royal Oak for an event. Nothing, nothing against Royal Oak. But I had the most difficult time driving around the block until somebody moved so I could park. So one of the, one of the most attractive things about this city is easy to park. This is not an issue. And for the venue we're talking about doing it at, in Civic Center area, there's just a lot of parking. When I would come to the fireworks, one of the easiest things about the fireworks, it's not a problem parking. And that's what people put in their minds, too, when they come somewhere, how easy it is to get to it. And then secondly, when I get to the location, can I actually park? And that, and that's a huge plus. The overall beauty of the site, it's a beautiful site. And especially with the backdrop of the library and everything, you're going to have the stage, you're going to have everything. It's just a beautiful, beautiful backdrop. And you've got excellent city services. I think, I think everybody in the area would, would agree with that, police department and otherwise. It's a very clean city. So all of those things play a part in deciding what you're going to do as far as an event is concerned. Some of the tentative list of artists, some people have been contacted already. One of the producers we're working with is a gentleman by the name of Darryl Williams. His partner Paul Reiser out of Chicago. And they are, they are working on bringing in the talent. Some of these people have been contacted, others have, have not confirmed yet. Marion Meadows has confirmed. Bob Baldwin and Shelby Brown will be there. Kimmy Horn, we talked to Kimmy. Kimmy's anxious to come back. She did the last one in two thousand eight, and she's raring to come back. So many of these artists are already, have already been contacted, and there are more than this, because you have to build a master list that's amazing, because of people's schedules. You've got to figure out who can come. Event revenue, this is a paid event. One of the things about paid events is a couple of things happen with a paid event, and especially a jazz event. Number one, you're, you're going to get a specific audience. You're going to hit a specific audience. The audience is going to, is going to be a little more mature. You're going to have less problems out of a more mature audience. And so the event revenue side, we're going to do a couple of different packages in one day and a two day. As you can see, the two day package, VIP seating, we have not settled on a price for VIP seating or seating just yet. But there'll be VIP seating as well. Sponsor support to help cover the expenses, we're going to have that. Sales of vendor opportunities, so we're going to get vendors out there who are going to want to be out there as well. Merchandise sales, we're going to print up a bunch of, a bunch of stuff, just to commemorate the event, commemorative shirts, hats, all that sort of stuff. And also, the city's going to be charging a surcharge on ticket sales, so you're going to be selling them as well, out of parks and rec. And I believe I've got the revenue numbers that we were, we were told that have been generated in, in the past. Beer and wine sales are going to be, that's the projection for that. To tell you the truth, that particular number could be higher, could be lower. It's just a projection. All right, our goal, and one of the things we want to do, is we're going to use Southfield businesses for this event. The biggest one being parking.
Can you do me a favor?
Sure.
Stand over here.
Not a problem, not a problem. Okay. All right. Pegasus Entertainment, who many of our event services team members are totally aware of and familiar with, is a very professional organization located in Southfield, right down East Mountain. They are an organization who knows how to do events. They do the Winter Blast, they do Art's Beats and Eat, they do some big stuff already. We're going to go, we're going to be in negotiation with Western Hotel for hotel rooms and things of that nature. And we're going to also use the Chamber of Commerce to identify other businesses that we can use for the things that we need for the jazz. All right. All right. What you need to establish a festival, whether it's here or any other place, is you've got to have a cooperation with city government, which we have received, and it's been excellent. I can, I can say that upfront. It has been a breeze of beauty to deal with Southfield government. Nothing hard about it at all. We've got the experience, production company, we've got the experienced event team, a comprehensive security plan. We've been talking already today with representatives from Southfield Police about a security plan for this event. Solid sponsors and a solid lineup of national talent. All right. What you need from the city basically is park and rec, the police department, your public work, business development, security plan. And again, we've already received cooperation from many of those groups. Just to give you a little bit of background on some of the setup and teardown, the event would be set up on a, on a Thursday morning, starting at eight AM. Pegasus would come into the grounds and begin setting up the event, prepping everything. Tear Down, or Striking as they call it, is Sunday morning, August eleventh, after the event. And security will be provided by us in the overnight hours, so that that doesn't braid, it would be really rudimentary for your police department and unnecessary. So we will provide security for those times overnight to guard the equipment. Getting back to Pegasus, over thirty years of experience in productions, and as you can see, just a list of the things that they actually do, and a complete list is available on their website and on their Facebook page. Now, we've got an experienced team, I'm going to blow past mine, because the other more important people are sitting in the back of the room. But that's a little bit about me. I've been in technology for a long time. And one of the most significant parts that, that deals with events is my time with Promise Keepers, doing events with the man you're going to meet back there, who is like a big time mentor, and that's why I brought him in. And so I want to get to those guys. All right, Randy Mason, if you would please stand. Randy Mason is, got thirty years of experience dealing with stadium events and all sorts of large events. And he'll, I'll let you read that stuff in your, in your packet, but he has well-rounded and very adequate event. I call him my mentor, because he has been an amazing guy to learn from doing these type of events. Next person, Ken Daniels. Twenty-five years' service with Michigan State Police. Ken, would you please stand and show yourself? Ken Daniels will be handling security, and again, you can see his qualifications in your packet. Stage logistics manager, Andrew Stiles. Andrew, would you please stand? And you see, you see, you'll see stuff about Andrew in your package. Well, fifteen years of event management experience and also service large clients like General Motors, Chrysler, Ford, Los Angeles. We've got to have a food guy. And unfortunately, the food guy's not here, but he's a very important part of the team in making sure that the event staff and the police and those that are artists in the event are fed properly. He also has event experience with Promise Keepers and a large stadium event environment. All right, safety, event safety and security. One thing that we talked about today is, is your police department being in the lead, providing the guidance on how the security plan is put together. And so they will work closely with Ken Daniel on formulation of a plan, and, and we will use or augment as needed or as advised by the police department in a security capacity, people that we will meet. Projected total budget for this event is between one hundred and twenty, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the, the city of Southfield Police, GPW costs, this is just an estimate of fifteen, production cost thirty-two, projected talent cost, they cost the most, sixty thousand dollars. All right? So that's just a small breakdown of, of the budget. Perspective sponsors, now these, where you see coming, these are people that already have sponsorship packets and are just waiting to hear back. Olympia Entertainment is in possession of ours. We're going after capital mortgage funding, Quicken Loans, and these are all of the sponsors that we're looking at going after. So it's, it's, this is just a small list of them, I should say, because the list is a lot larger. But those that are currently reviewing are just awaiting further information. And that is that. And I'll just open up some questions that you might have.
The sponsors that you have on there, do you have anyone that's willing to do a, be like the key headline sponsor?
Actually, that would be Olympia Entertainment. There are, there are three on that list that would, that really could underwrite it by themselves.
Right.
Olympia Entertainment, the two you don't see are Quicken Loans, and the one you do see is Harry Glanz's capital mortgage funding. So those are, those are two that, yeah, they're on the list, and they could, they could do this by themselves. But General Motors is being contacted, PepsiCo is being contacted. And that was one of the questions I had for Mr. Black. I don't know if it was Mr. Black or one of them asked the question about exclusivity agreement.
Right.
Because you've got to be careful coming into a city. You don't know who's got what agreement. Maybe you use Coke products, maybe you use Pepsi, but you don't want to upset the apple cart in that way. But other than that, everybody's on the hit list, including the sponsors that did this before in two thousand eight, for sure. They're on, they're on the list, for sure.
And I know this is your, your agenda, but one of the sponsors opportunities was that, separate area that was, that they could entertain their guests separately.
VIP, absolutely.
On VIP.
That is, that's actually one of the sponsorship letters that is going out for those type of opportunities, to have a separate VIP area to entertain their people, absolutely.
And that was a huge selling point, because, you know, some, for the VIPs to just be at the festival, and then they even tried one year to have a separate area that you paid more for, that you didn't have to worry about some brothers and all that. The other thing is, the beer and wine, there, toward the end, we are allowing charities to have the beer tent for a certain period of time. And that was, to me, that was a really good partnership, because we had the Optimist Club, we had other things, and the organization would man the tent, and they would get the proceeds during that time. And I just wanted to throw that out there as an opportunity. Sometimes that was considered taking profit away from the organization, but I, I just thought that was really, a really strong community piece with that.
We discussed, actually, had discussed it with the team about beer and wine. We discussed it, we really discussed it about, because it's going to be August hot.
Yes.
That was one of the things we talked about doing with the water, but the beer and wine is not out of the question.
I mean, whatever, just allow the local charity.
Yeah, because, because, exactly, because you, because one of the reasons I can't speak to that per se is when you invite like the beer companies, like we're going after Millicours, I have no idea at that point how that begins to intersect. I can't see where it would be a huge problem, but, but yeah, it's, it's a good thing. If you've done it in the past, it's worked. Everything that helps that charity make some money, because that's what we talked about that with the water, is like, you know, the proceeds from water sales are going to be enormous.
Oh, it'd be huge.
Yeah, enormous.
Now, this is the other thing, when you, the advertising, and I, I used to interact a lot with smooth jazz.
Okay.
And one of their greatest assets is that they have the targeted market, and they got to enter, they got to advertise to the people that wanted to come.
Yes.
Month in advance.
Yes.
Now, your digital, I don't know if you have the ability to see how centrally located, because jazz people, and it's being digital, it could be anywhere in the country.
Yeah.
But is there any other, your marketing cost is going to be greater than smooth jazz, because, you know, you said you have a viewing audience of one hundred?
That's what, what, the best part about what we do is, for example, terrestrial radio has to, they have to depend on Arbitron, they have to depend on Neoprene. And, and so those variables can be really kind of topsy-turvy. They use something called the CUMS number, which actually kind of multiplies what actually exists. Well, the cool part about digital is ours lost actual IP addresses, and we can actually see the actual location of the target audience, which kind of gives us a little bit of a, a little bit of a, now, we already know, you're right. We already know, we have to put out additional advertising on television.
Right.
Use people like Target, Spotify, Google, and all that sort of stuff to pull the pop.
But I just want to make sure you're...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, next, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Mayor did address some of the issues I wanted to talk about, but I want to talk about sponsors again. I think we had, General Motors was a major sponsor, and I thought they pulled out, I thought that was a good reason for the lady, that General Motors pulled out, was very close. But, well, I want to ask you about this list, because the people that are currently reviewing are the only people that have been contacted, these others have not been contacted?
We've, we've put out, we've put out most of that stuff to certain players in the beginning. For example, Olympia Entertainment was an opportunity, we had someone on the inside who was willing to begin the review process. And, and so at some point, we decided that we wanted to make sure that this date was a complete, I mean, ready to go before just flooding everybody out there. Right?
So either other people have not been contacted?
Not all of them, but their perspective, absolutely, absolutely. The ones currently, currently reviewing have the paperwork in their hands.
Okay. So either others are going to...
Move forward.
Whatever you feel is the right time is the right person.
We'll move forward tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Yes, bet you. Literally, bottom line is, bottom line is, we didn't want to be too presumptuous, and we wanted to make sure that we had the blessing of this body.
We don't want to go after...
And then once we have the blessing of this body, then there's a lot that gets triggered in, within twenty-four hours, believe me.
Like a loan's got to do something for Southfield.
I think they, I think you will. And that, there are a couple of them that I actually ended up with, quite by accident, a connection to. Harry Glanz, I actually met him personally at Helenic Coney Island after having lunch with, with another gentleman who I know, who Harry actually knew, and he actually described this event. And, and Harry said, send me a, you know, when you know, send me a proposal.
I want to tell a guy who is a school, he would go off.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Olympia Entertainment would be great, I mean, they've got structural representation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Fourteen and five, they're supposed to do something. What you mentioned about...
And one, and since one is my thing, they, yeah, they should do something, absolutely.
My thing, too, so I can help you.
Yeah, that's right.
Charities, I think, and past, we did have the water sales go to local charities. I don't know about the, we're, I don't really know.
We did, yes.
Did we, the beer, the water, it surely did.
You said the Optimists did, you?
Yes.
That's all important, that's all. I want to go on to the other things.
All right, next, I, Mr. Fraser.
Just a question. What about a rain date or is that a, have you figured that into your plans?
A rain date? Um, that's a good, you know, that's a, that's a good, that's a good alternative plan. You're absolutely right. One of the reasons we did not think about a rain date per se, we actually did the weather studies on this, and during that time of the year, it's, if you get something, it's a very quick passing shower.
Thought we had a rain at one, at one event.
But...
Had a muds out there.
Yeah. But, but now, it'd be kind of interesting, a good alternative. As a matter of fact, I think I asked, who was it? One of you about the inside, I can't remember which one. But I did ask, I was very curious when I got into the Parks and Rec building, this was a really big area. And so that would be an awesome alternative, because you could actually stage, you could do something alternatively inside, what is that considered, the, the...
The...
Yeah, yeah, that's a generous area. So that would be a great place for an alternative. Okay.
Was that muds, that, whatever, wasn't that, wasn't that a, a tournament?
No, no, it's a jazz, a jazz...
It was a jazz fest, and it was never canceled.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Lance.
Yeah, I'm, you're telling about the revenue sharing. Is there revenue sharing?
Oh, you mean as far, as far as the...
The service, any of the tickets?
I've got you.
In the past, as it's, as it's been explained to me, you guys sold tickets from the Parks and Rec Building.
Correct.
And, and you charged a surcharge for that, that service. And I was told it generates approximately maybe between three and four thousand dollars. And so that, that's something that we would do. That's not a, that's not even an issue. So that would be one way that that could be done. Well, is that enough?
Mr. Lance, is that it?
Is that enough?
We get the rental, uh, the, yeah, the rental from the line, exactly.
We tried it before, we didn't charge a lot.
There is a rental or not?
If I can just fix that. For a moment, Mr. Lance, I mean, the bottom line total that returns to the city is about twenty-five thousand dollars. There's cost recovery from the police department, park services, GPW, fire administration, there's about a four or five thousand dollar revenue stream from the ticket sales that Ken just mentioned. And there's the forty-five hundred dollar fee that's been traditional for the rental of front line.
Forty-five hundred dollars?
Forty-five hundred dollars. That's what we did.
We charged, we charged to CalD A and...
No, for the past, for the past Jazz Fest festivals that we've had, there was a forty-five dollar front line rental fee. And you have to remember, this is a two day festival, not a three day festival, so some of the cost recovery figures will be a little bit lower.
Forty-five hundred a day or forty-five hundred for the two days?
Forty-five hundred dollar flat fee for both days.
And how about the lawn, if it becomes damaged or something?
It's, it's going to be the standard boilerplate, working with the city attorney. There's going to be a performance bond between, you know, ten or fifteen thousand dollars. Because Bob literally lives here all weekend, and in the past, the festival that you mentioned, there were some issues where there were some springboard heads that needed to be replaced, curb cuts, things of that nature. And there are also insurance requirements.
You said there was violence?
There are also insurance requirements.
Oh, what about the, the rain to save, what about violence, what about property?
Sergeant Bass sits in the audience. He was at the table at the meeting we had this afternoon. I've had conversations with Mr. Charette and the police chiefs, and that's all part of the planning process. Once we get the approval from this, it's the way we've run it in years past, whether it's the Jazz Fest or any other special event, all the different departments are brought to the table, and police is right, right at the head of the class. There will be certain, police department, there will be officers that will be available starting on Friday through Saturday, and they'll work in conjunction with the security manager that you met a couple minutes ago.
Another question. Will there be some, some way of... Another question, will there be, uh, some, some way of checking the people for guns? You know, people can come in with their guns.
Sergeant Bass, I don't know.
In today's environment, you know what happens.
Absolutely.
As, uh, as Mr. Block mentioned, this is something that we've been meeting with, uh, the organizers. In previous events, what they've done is the security for the event has checked bags, which is typical for an event like this. Um, obviously, we're still at the point of getting this even approved as an event, so those kind of final details haven't been decided. But again, previously, what we did was they went, did something where they do like a bag check or something along that lines. I would anticipate that is probably what we would do in an event like this.
Well, the, the checking the bags, just on the females, or on the males.
We check bags, whoever's carrying a bag.
Huh?
Call bags, we call bags, gender.
Well, the males don't carry bags, the men, the men carry guns. You can't answer, you don't know.
Is it, is it a question or a statement, I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Well, that's a question, the males, the women carry bags, it's easier to check. The men carry guns, can you check? No.
If, if, I, again, I can only speak to experience of previous events. We, they have checked bags, and my guess is that, that will be the requirement.
I'm talking about. People, for instance, many concert venues do a pat down, it's, that's, I think, addresses this question.
Yeah, we, again, we can certainly do a full review, um, past events, this crowd, um, the, the, the type of folks that this crowd, uh, tends to bring is a little bit older crowd, um, a very family-oriented crowd, and our calls for service have been close to zero. If, I mean, there's been some minor medical runs, things like that. But this has been nothing like some of the other events, uh, and calls for service that we have dealt with. So, obviously, we can only deal, you know, we can't be, predict exactly what's going to happen. But in looking at the crowds that this has typically brought in, something like a full pat down of those coming in is probably not called for. It's something that we would certainly review with the organizers, but I don't know, um, that that would be something that would be necessary for this sort of crowd.
And people who are wearing wristbands, I assume?
Ken, wait.
I'm helping you.
I know you're helping me.
Uh, they'll be wearing wristbands, the, um, that they belong.
Everybody who enters or exits is ticketed. Yes, the, the entire event is, is secured with fencing all the way around. There'll be two to three points of entry for the entire event, one being a VIP, one being the general entrance, and then probably like an artist and other, uh, uh, folks who are working the event entrance.
All right, Mr. Lance.
The environment of today, as you and I know, is entirely different. You're not, you can't tell me that the, that the younger people will not come into this jazz festival. You can't tell me they won't, I know they will. When I say the younger, I don't say kids, I say the teens, and a little bit, uh, they carry guns.
Our, again, I can only speak to this event, in the past, that is not the case, it's not, it.
No indication of what could, of what is happening today.
I, I would, like I said, in, in who typically listens to this style of music, I'm not sure that it's become a younger crowd.
Well, I think you will get younger.
All right.
You're advertising all over the, the area?
Basically, I can address the advertising. The advertising, even the advertising is going to be on stadium units with a totally different audience. For example, WWJ, to be honest with you, is going to be a business audience, uh, it's gonna be a professional audience. Even, uh, sports radio, WXYZ, that's gonna be one of the stations that we advertise on. Again, it's a, a whole different, a whole different audience, and the, in the, in the genre of jazz as a whole, does not, does not attract an eighteen-year-old crowd. It just doesn't. Uh, that crowd is anywhere from twenty-eight years old and up, and many of them are very professional young people, uh, who don't have an interest in getting in trouble. They just wanna do their careers and they just wanna live life and they just, it's, it's not that type of audience.
Where are you going to advertise?
Uh, WWJ?
No, the cities, the cities.
Wherever those cities, wherever those cities, in other words, wherever those, those, uh, stations reach their reach, that's who will advertise. Uh, WJR has a large reach, WWJ has a large reach, and so does sports radio. So wherever they go in the metro area, that's what, that's what that advertising reach is going to be, also television. Uh, so you've got Fox Two, you've got WDIV, you've got Channel Seven. As a matter of fact, we're actually approaching one of those stations about being an official sponsor and being on scene to cover the event. So whoever that is, they'll, they'll actually get exclusive broadcast rights, and that's probably who's gonna carry the most advertising for, for the event.
I'd like to listen to me for a moment.
Sure.
All right. Are you done?
Wait, I got another one.
Okay.
We have had problems with people coming into our city, going to our restaurants, going to public places, using guns, shooting and all that. And you think you can keep out those eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty people?
We can keep them out of the event, uh, unless they've bought a ticket. Now, if they've bought a ticket, and that's the other thing, the ticket price doesn't lend itself to that crowd. Because you're talking about thirty-five dollars for a single date, sixty dollars for both days. So it's even priced at a price point where you're going to get a different crowd altogether. If it was priced at, for example, five, ten bucks, uh, you might get that, but then the, the other problem that I, I see with that theory is again, the genre of music is different from what they listen to. That age group is more into a hip-hop. If we were bringing a hip-hop, uh, concert to your city, it would be totally different.
It wouldn't happen.
It would be totally, well, that's my point, but I'm saying, it wouldn't happen, but, but you see my point? Your, your, your genres of music draw different audiences, and that's, that's what I'm trying.
I'm not against this.
No, no, I'm just, I'm trying to answer your question.
I'm only giving you some information and, uh, experience that we have. There was a restaurant recently that was closed up, they had a line of teens, when I say teens, eighteen to forty. They were charged, they paid thirty dollars, then when they went in, they paid more, they could afford it.
This was a restaurant?
Uh, nightclub.
But you should have heard the music, the music was completely, it was rap, it was, it was, yeah, it was awful rap.
Yeah.
It wasn't even good rap, so.
All right, you know, I mean, I, I, we, we have to move on, uh, because we have three other things, and I've got several people that wanna speak, so.
All right, I have my say, okay.
Thank you.
It's on the record.
Uh, Mr. Moss is next, and that is Seymour.
Yeah, I'm about to contradict this whole conversation, I came to this event all throughout college, so I, but it does attract a different type of, you know, people who might have appreciation for this music, sophisticated as, as mine is.
And he came with his parents.
I came with my parents, yeah, it was a family, it was a family outing, that's true.
You can't compare yourself with, with.
Well, that's not even my question, so my, the point that I wanna make is, um, on slide four, I don't know if you can go back, but you talk about all the amenities that this city has and, and you know, what a, what a great, uh, experience you've had cooperating with Southfield government at every level. And I know that that's, that's something that the, the people at this table definitely like to hear. But we need, uh, you also, uh, to kinda be an ambassador for us. And when you go forward and you're dealing with Pegasus, and you're dealing with other entertainment venues, we need, you know, we need the word of mouth from you to, to talk about, that was the slide, if you wanna go forward. Yeah. You know, all those things, you know, we're, we're self-promoters, we wanna, you know, do everything for the best benefit of the city, and we wanna attract businesses. But when somebody has a good, positive experience in working with the city and spreads that around, it's, it lends more credibility than when we talk about ourselves. So I guess, I just wanna keep that.
Let me give you an example about how much, how, how smooth this has been, I put it on my Facebook page.
Great, 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 so that, so I, I wanna.
Yes, was it pleasurable?
Yeah, I wanna definite, it, it to be on your mind throughout the entire summer as you're planning up to this, to help us. As, we need to do economic development in this city, and if you're somebody who's had a positive experience in bringing a large venue, the accessibility of coming in and out of the city process, we need you to be an ambassador for us. As you go to, as, as you've been working with partners, including Pegasus, which is a major event, uh, organization throughout the whole region, we need you to be an ambassador on our behalf. So I just wanna make sure that that's on your mind when this is all said and done. Um, because this is a huge opportunity for Southfield, and we wanna keep this momentum going and, and, you know, be a sense, be a, be a community that, you know, there are things to go to and have. But we can only do that if the people that we partner with spread that around. So I just wanted to make a quick comment that I'm excited for it, um, and I'll definitely be there, but we need you to keep promoting our city, um, throughout the whole process.
Let me say one thing on, on that, is we don't want to just come in and do this one time.
Yeah.
We want this to be a, an annual event. The first meeting we ever had, on the twenty-eighth, went very smoothly, and we went right on talking about what we could do in twenty fourteen. The same thing happened at the Parks and Rec board meeting, and that's actually been a lot of the discussion is, okay, fine, we wanna get through the one, but how do we make twenty fourteen better than, and build on it?
And certainly, you know, we want, we would, if it goes well, which I anticipate it will, it will, we wanna continue to have this be an annual thing. But my thought is that, I think when you, when major events wanna do, major venues wanna do kind of an outdoor setting, I think the default is place to go is downtown Royal Oak. And so when we have, you don't think so?
No.
Well, that's, that's, but I'm saying, that's a good thing that, you know, you, you can be somebody who says, you know, Southfield is actually the optimal place to do something like this.
Yeah, and the biggest, the biggest night I have on, on Royal Oak, and not to beat the city up. I, and, and like I said, I can only go personally, but the things I went to in Royal Oak, I'm just being honest with you, have frustrated me to no end. And I've talked to other people parking. And as a matter of fact, somebody asked me, would you pay for, would you actually charge for parking at this event? And my, my, my response was, are you kidding? The first thing people think about when they come someplace is whether they had a pleasurable experience, parking, it boils down to stuff like that. And so I think you, you have to really, I look at Royal Oak and I say, it's a nice place to visit, if you can park.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I'm excited, and I, and I'm, uh, I'm definitely, I'll be there, so.
All right, and that's Mr. Seymour, and then we need to move along.
Uh, first of all, we have a long history of having this jazz festival, so many people ask about it, and because the sponsor left, and it has nothing to do with the city of Southfield. It's, you know, within that organization, so people, people will come to this. I think what, what we have to think about, when you said you check all bags, it doesn't like backpacks and anything that people might bring in.
Yes.
Not just handbags, if maybe not even handbags. But, but I think now, since the Boston Marathon, we always have to think of a large event, where a lot of people, just be one person to come in with one of these, you know, pressurized, pressure cooker bombs, ju- and just because they can. So to have that kind of security where anything that's being carried in is looked at, that, that, if that has been done there, there to profit, nobody thought of it. So that, that I think is what, what we have to be concerned, from now, from now on, everywhere, when we have an event. Uh, but I'm sure if you are, have the interest in, in continuing, I'm sure it will continue. Because we, you know, we have this reputation, uh, we will use you in everything we can to help promote the city, because it will promote this event, too.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So I, I'm very excited about it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Um, I, I have one, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in the past, we've had events on the, uh, lawn that have run over sixteen thousand dollars.
What, what do you think?
Excuse me. Excuse me. We've had events in the past that have run over sixteen thousand dollars, uh, is there a guarantee that if, if more, uh, police or, or park services, uh, requirements, uh, that, uh, you're gonna cover everything?
Yes, that's definitely worked out through our agreement.
The city can't be, this is a great event, we want it, but we, we can't be on the tab for it.
I think, you know, when we came into this process, uh, one of the parts of, one of the research items I first did was the fact that municipalities can't support these things. And that you have to be in the mindset that you have to support it wholly. And so that's where you do the ticket sales, and obviously the sponsors, but to be frank and honest, really, the ticket sales will cover the event easily. Uh, and that's, that's not gonna be an issue paying for it.
We also, a bond is calculated, the upfront bond, based on what we anticipate there will be between parks and rec, public courses, police.
Yep. I'll just add one really quick then.
Sure.
Since the initial meeting, candidate team, they understand the concept of full cost recovery, and to Mr. Lance's point, the whole security issues. We, uh, given the couple of those versions of some of the scenarios that went down in the past year, and understand countless concerns. Moving forward to their credit, we were much ahead of the curve in even having this initial meeting, not to be too, too presumptuous, this was gonna pass. And we will have subsequent meetings addressing your concerns and everybody else's.
Um, we're gonna move this to the seven o'clock agenda, is there, um, anybody that is opposed to being, having that on the agenda? If not, um, we are moving that to the seven o'clock, and we'll move on to our next topic, I've got a question, we have three other things. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next thing on our agenda is the authorization to apply for an MDOT, uh, economic development, uh, category A grant for the rehabilitation of a brown road bridge.
Yes, I'll introduce this and then turn it over to, uh, our exhibit, uh, the Yolts. This is a, just, an economic development initiative, partnership with BASF, uh, to, to, uh, co, co-apply for a, uh, grant. Uh, hundred eighty-five thousand, maybe under twenty-three dollars, that's a match coming out of our major streets and budget. For the purpose of improving the, uh, bridge, uh, that is, uh, the, the production interest for BASF. Uh, this will allow them to invest, uh, other monies, uh, in their capital, uh, of, uh, in their site, which is a two hundred, three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. And also bring eleven new, uh, uh, highly compensated, uh, positions, uh, to the city of Southfield. If that leaves, Yolts, please.
Good evening, Ms. Yolts.
Good evening, President. Uh, so what we have is category A grant through the MDOT economic development fund. Uh, this grant will allow us, this bridge has been on our hit list for quite a while, um, it doesn't qualify in MDOT's language as a bridge. So it's not eligible for local bridge funding, um, the way it's built now. So this was an opportunity for us to make some real improvements to this bridge and give it a big, long, extended life, um, and having some participation with state funds. So is, is everyone familiar with the location of this bridge?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause it's on, you know, a piece of road that you probably don't travel too often, I put a map up here. Here's our mixing bowl area and where Telegraph is, this is where Franklin comes up and turns into eleven mile road there. So, but if you jog a little off to the right, there's a little stretch of road, it's the dead end, and goes to two BASF-owned properties. And then there's a property over here that's leased by AT&T, and that's a pretty critical, uh, property for them, where all of their service trucks originate from.
Well, yeah, the last year, we've had to restrict the weight.
Uh, we've had to restrict the weight for the last several years. So this bridge is on an annual inspection rotation because of its condition. So each year, we have to lower the load limit, and, which has caused, in two thousand and eleven, it's caused BASF to have to reroute some of their heavier trucks.
And Mr. President, these are monies that the MDOT has that are economic development related. The mayor, Shelley Freeman, in two thousand and ten, and Mackinac spoke to Mike Finney, the, uh, president of Machine Economic Development Corporation. And our lobbyists has worked with us, as well as BSS lobbyists, the last, we've been working on this almost three years now?
Yep.
Uh, I would remind everyone that this is, what's before us is only the applications to apply for the grant. It is not building a bridge, uh, or anything else, it is just the permission to apply for grants.
Right, this is permission to apply, and what, uh, bridge repairs that we're asking to make here is to replace some of the bridge's steel beams, steel support beams, as well as the concrete decking, the railings, and then the approaches, the drive approaches to the bridge.
Procedurally, uh, the grant would come back if successful, and then we would, uh, use the normal bid processes, uh, for the, uh, for the construction, and that would come back, the council would want.
Correct.
All right, first I have Mr. Lance, then I have Mr. Paccucci, and Mr. Prager.
Does this bridge go into that, uh, complex, that office complex, or where is it, on Eight Mile?
No, it's Eleven Mile. It's in your packet, is it the green?
It's Telegraph.
Throw behind the holiday.
Oh, I know, okay, okay.
It's in the drawer that go to the two of them.
All right, I know, okay.
All right, uh, Mr. Paccucci.
You know, I, I'd like to have, um.
You know, I'd like to have, um, to, uh, I'd like to see how much is in that, the major street budget fund?
There's sufficient funds for, for the match.
We got it.
No questioning at night.
It is tight though. The street budgets are tight.
Okay, uh, Mr. Frager?
Is this our street?
Eleven Mile is our street.
No, not private street.
Correct.
You know, it's a dead end.
I know. You're right.
But we did, we actually did explore with BASF, and we at one point asked them if they would take it as a private street. For all practical reasons, it functions like a private street. But it is our road, we own it, our bridge, our, it was built before bridge standards, today's standards for bridges, doesn't meet the width to qualify for federal funding for bridges. Council may recall in two thousand and nine, this is one of the projects in February that we had, had identified as a future engineering project. And it's, it's at that point that we find out that it doesn't qualify for federal bridge, future federal bridge funding. And that future fed- federal bridge funding is now a hyper competitive process. It's no longer a separate category for bridges alone.
When we get done building this, if we, if it goes through, will the bridge be built to federal standards so that could, in the future, if something comes up?
It will qualify.
Right, let me, yeah, something correct, because, um, originally, we, you know, years ago, when we were trying to get, see if we could get funding, we were trying to replace the bridge. So when, to do a complete bridge replacement, it would have then been built to the standards to make it meet MDOT's definition of a bridge. But because this is just rehabilitation of the bridge, the foundations are still in the same place, those, those walls, and that, those walls are what the dimensions are in between. And we're short two feet, a couple inches. So it will remain short, but this will give us another fifty years of life for this bridge. That, um, you know, we'll be wrestling with this again, what someone will, um, harm to the future.
Okay.
All right, done?
Um, I'm, I'm.
Okay, I had a quick question. Uh, was carbon fiber considered for the beam replacement?
Uh, no, these are steel beams. So the carbon fiber reinforced are for the larger bridges that have concrete beams.
All right, um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, this is also is on our consent agenda. Is there any objection to that? To apply for this grant? If they're none, then we'll, uh, discuss this again at seven o'clock.
That question, will this come back to us to accept?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
This is just the application.
That's our standard procedure. All of them come back.
Okay, uh, we're moving right along. Uh, number three on the five thirty clock is a reconfigured Southfield Estate Sidewalk Improvement Project Grant Application.
Uh, yes, uh, on April eighth, the council approved, uh, applying for a grant, uh, through the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments for the Southfield Village Estate Sidewalk Improvement Program. Uh, since that date, there was a meeting, uh, of the residents in the area. And there is a newly reconfigured, uh, request. And to outline it, I think the easiest way is to just try to simplify the numbers here. Oh, yeah, this is a law. This is how the numbers break down. Uh, the total project cost, again, this is an application for a grant. So what we're, what we're requesting is the ability to go out for a grant for, to save passages to schools and it's, uh, non motorized pedestrian, uh, walkways. Um, the total grant, the total project is four hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. The percentages are forty percent by the grant, forty percent by an SAD. That's a Special Assessment District. It would have to be established and supported by the community to make this work. And twenty percent city funded. And the twenty percent city funding is comprised of engineering costs of sixty-eight thousand, one-ten, and ADA accessibility of twenty-seven, four-forty-five, which is approximately one-half of the cost of the accessibility, uh, of, of construction costs involved in the project. Uh, all of these costs have to be covered upfront by the city because this would, this is a reimbursable, a reimbursable grant, which is what we mean here. That means the, the city puts forth the dollars and then we recoup the dollars from the grant as the project is completed. And the SAD, uh, over a period of ten years at three percent interest would be the reimbursement stream. Two things have to happen to make this project work. That is that the grant, uh, application, well, three things actually. First, we have to submit grant. And then if the grant application is successful, there also has to be an SAD, uh, a Special Assessment District, uh, accepted by and supported by, uh, the residents to make, uh, these numbers work.
Uh, I, if I could add here, Mr. Lance and I attended the community meeting. Um, there was overwhelming support, uh, for, I, Mr. Lance, would you say forty, fifty residents were there? And Ms. Schultz was there and, uh, Mr. Treble, forty, fifty people were there. Uh, there's overwhelming support for this, at the.
What?
Yeah, at the neighborhood meeting.
What about it? I mean, were you asking?
I'm telling.
Oh, okay.
Uh, there was support from the people that happened to show up to a neighborhood meeting. Uh, for, there was one person in the audience who objected, correct?
Yes.
Beat the crap out of him.
You gave him a run for his money.
I gave him a run for his money.
I have no doubt. I believe it.
He was sold, sold or sold.
Then also, this would be on the consent agenda, uh, for authorization to apply for a grant.
Is there any other questions? Um, is Mr. Paccucci, your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're first, then Ms. Seymour?
Uh, I don't need. Let me, uh, make this observation, I guess I would call it. Um, you know, we're talking about, uh, because of the grant. It's, and to me, this grant has caused, uh, the city to follow, uh, unwritten rules. And, and, and I have no objection to going after the grant. But, but all sidewalks in the city have a process and a policy to follow. And we have no power in any of the policies. We've had no resolution, one, two, three, four, and five. What we have done is we have hired a architect to do all the drawings and, and I don't know what they're based on, because that's usually, you know, after we have declared this a necessity, which we have not known. In other words, this should have, uh, just to go over, let's see, you know, the first, resolution one is to refer to the administration who prepare a report to inform council of the, of the necessity of the project. And resolution number two, which council passes, it determines that the project is necessary. And then, and resolution number three, the public hearing, uh, to the public to see if they are in favor of it. And then resolution number four is the assessor prepares the role after, uh, they have got that affirmation of the people. And then the role comes before the public. And, and then, of course, the treasurer then levies the role. And that is, that is the way government in Southfield works. Now, what we have done is we've got a grant and engineers are working and, and I don't know where the money's coming from, who approved the money to spend on this project. Uh, I don't know how much. I'm sure there's more than one or two thousand dollars that even paying a guest to go to these public meetings to talk about the project. So it's, it's, it's coming from a grant, not coming from the council, to the administrator. I, I, and, and so, I don't know how it's going to, how to react to this, you know, because now we have spoke to the residents, we've had discussions with them. We let them down the path that we're going to do this. And we don't even know whether we have the grant or how much the grant is. You can now understand the original grant is being had to put more money into this project to relieve the residents. But nowhere in there does it, the, the rules tell the city to do such a thing. And, and so, uh, I mean, I would like to see this thing get back on track so that we follow procedures that we had since day one. And those council act on those resolutions one through five and do it properly so that everything is legal and, and, and we can support, uh, the project and the letting of the, of the assessment. And that the treasurer then receives the proper permission to spread the role. This way, the treasurer brings this to council and to the back door. And, and, and I'm not saying that he should bring it to the, to the city, but it should have gone to the council and council then referred to the city administrator and followed the necessary steps and procedures of the city so that if anybody challenges the role or the amount of money we're spending. Lastly, uh, I have a real concern in that where the money is coming from for this project. I don't know who sent it, but I, I, the revolving fund, revolving fund had, it was cut in half. There was eight million dollars and we now have four million dollars left after, I wrote it on something.
We got it.
Uh, you have it, I don't have it, my laptop.
Yeah.
You know, it's on my internet, but I haven't got it in my time. Anyway, yeah, then, I haven't got that. I just got it on the internet. But, but look what's happening and, and you know, uh, I mean, I'm very concerned about the dollars. I'm sure you, council and mayor are too. I know the administrators see very little of this. But, you know, we have, have to have a priority. And, and I tell you, I was out getting signatures and people are talking about roads. I mean, our roads are crumbling, they're falling apart. Uh, we have the worst winter that I think we've ever had as far as roads. I drove on Greenfield because I knew that, that we were involved in that. And I, I can't even believe a road could, should even exist like that in the city. But, but when you leave that street and go down a road, then it's the same way. And then if you go on the Service Drive, you turn right on, you go north on, on the Service Drive, it's worse than right lane.
Our neighborhood street.
So, so.
Our neighborhood street.
So, well, yeah, and that's what I heard. I had a person put it at, and, and when she signed my petition, she put it X, and let the view vote for local street improvement. Because that's how much they care about it and, and they see it. And, and, and so, I, I just, you know, we, we have another, another half a million dollars that is spent on sidewalks and, and, um, and half million on Eaglewood Park. And then two million approximately, whatever it is, on Ramada. And, and, you know, we need our roads. We need to have this money, I think, we're, we're way short, I, I asked earlier about how much money is in a major road. And, and, and I know it's not enough to cover anything.
Can I add a quick question?
Yes.
Uh, one, are you recommending that we not proceed with this?
No, I'm saying is.
I just want to get clear where you're at.
Okay, what I'm saying is, number one, is go back to the resolutions that the policy sets forth. Number two is, if the grant is available, to go after the grant and see what, how much monies we can get to apply to this project. So, but I think we have to find out how much money we're talking about if we are going to get this grant so that we know how to apply it to, to the project itself. Uh, you look at this, this plan, for example, I, I mean, I, you know, I drove this thing and walked it. But down at the, if you look at the map here, there's a little turnaround there, there's four houses on it. You know, the sidewalk, in the first phase, I think my one scene, is just going along the southern end of that and stopping. Now it's going all the way around and I don't know what to do going around in a circle. I mean, it doesn't make sense, you know, I mean sidewalks cost money. And you, if you want to save money, it should, I mean, after you pass that, that, uh, the holes on whatever street.
Fair map.
That, that, you know, you have, you have the widest sidewalk you have in, in the city. And that's a street because nobody uses it to turn around. And, and, I mean, they could actually, they actually could end at the end of where the four houses are. I, I guess I'm looking at, uh, to answer your question, uh, I am very, very, very concerned about spending the money from, from the, uh, the city revolving fund on, on sidewalks. Because I don't know where the money is going to come from. It, it's not only cash, it's, if you read that eight million dollars, that's our investments we're spending, you know? And, and, and I love this, because I have, uh, two gray probably, less than a percent, maybe seven and a half, whatever, but, but at, at least you get something. But you're going to spend your investment money and, and, and then over ten years, you're going to try to three percent over ten years. So you're going to give up that, that money that you've been investing in. You're going to, it's guide by the mind of ten years. And we're going, then, you know, what are we going to do in ten years that we're facing? And, and looking at the, the roads that we have. I, so, uh, Mr. President, I, I, I mean, I, I am very concerned about the money. And, and, and I just don't know what priority, and, and, don't get me wrong. I mean, I understand there was the last Jewish community, I mean, I had, when I was there, I had, you know, that company for me, we had the era put up all around the city. We, we did, I was with Governor Blanche, went to New York, over the bridges, over the expressways. I, I understand all this, but, but how important are the sidewalks? If they're important enough, then, then we should pay only a third less on this project because when I look back at the sidewalks, special assessments that we had in the past, we're going back to two thousand and two, I looked at, uh, the seven thousand dollar project. You're only paying like two thousand dollars.
May, may I suggest this, uh, please? I think we all share the concern with the money and, uh, we're all hearing the road issue. Um, and I think this has gotten a little off track. So I don't argue with anything you're saying, but where we are tonight, this is a grant application. I think we really need to know how much money we are going to get. And then we would assess whether we would go forward with this.
Yes, that's fine.
Because if this is a loser for us, it does come down to priorities. And that's one of the reasons I've been pushing visiting because we have to decide what our priorities are with what resources we have. And maybe, uh, and, and this is a safety thing for the community and it's a great project, but we're in a different day and age, so.
Yeah, but what I'm afraid of, Mr. President, is that we have excited the people and that, yeah, now looking forward to a sidewalk.
And I think you've got a point there as well. But I would add one of the things.
Leading people on is just not my game.
I would add one other thing. We, we had a community meeting. We have no scientific data as to how many people, once, and some people are under the impression it's only going to cost them a hundred dollars. And that's not, that's not the case. So we really don't know how many people, how many people are really going to sign on the dotted line when they see this, see what the figures are. So, um.
But I think we have already spent, I, I've been to the city, we have already spent forty thousand dollars on this project. We haven't done anything yet. I don't know exactly what it is.
The trust will shake your head, no, I, I don't know.
Anybody can shake their head. I'd like to see the, the checks that were made out.
The direct cost, the direct cost, probably about fifteen thousand. No, not indirect cost.
We haven't done anything.
It's a whole other ballgame.
Yeah, anyway.
All right.
I just might.
Um, is there any, any other comment on this? Otherwise, we'll, we'll.
John in the room?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Seymour?
Did I have my hand up?
No, I, I didn't see it, so.
You told me, you said no after.
Well, I do have a question because there's some areas in here that I don't think actually need a sidewalk because they back up to the shopping center. And, um, people are walking and there's, there's, there's not two-way traffic. There just isn't true traffic. and there's, there's, there's not two-way traffic, it just, there isn't true traffic. But, I, I mean, I have the same concerns Don has. I think we'd all like to see sidewalks completed everywhere. That's something we've, we've always talked about all down through the years, we didn't like having a sidewalk to nowhere. Um, but our economics management of the city really have to be, you know, above everything else. I don't know, that's, that's really what concerns me, there's a lot of things we need to do, the roads need to be done most urgently and, um, I mean, we're, I, I have concerns, economic concerns and priority concerns. And I just think we have to be very cautious about what, how we go forward.
Mr. Fraser and then Ms. Lawrence.
Yes, um, is there more sidewalk here than there wasn't originally?
Yeah. If I could...
It looks like it needs one.
Both the streets now. And I, I don't want to labor anything too much, but the initial grant application is, what is the minimum that we needed to do to make the connection? But based on the response of the neighborhood, they said if we're willing to do a special assessment district, we will to do everything, that's the plan that we have before you. It was always our intention that if we needed to scale the, this project back depending on the grant amounts, we would. Of the four hundred, close to five hundred thousand, we're only talking about a ninety five thousand dollar city match. And because of the support that we got at the neighborhood meeting, we said, what, what would it take to do all the sidewalks in the entire neighborhood? So, that's why it's back before you, because it's a much more comprehensive grant application. And our intent is, we have to go through this process of the special assessment district, we have to go back to the neighborhood depending on how much funding we got and we can make decisions on what's prior and what isn't. And we wanted to at least apply for everything. So, it is, it is expanded from the first time that we submitted it to you.
Yeah, um, I share a lot of concerns that, uh, Mr. Fercassi shares and that is, this seems to have sprung up like a mushroom. We hadn't heard anything about it and then I found out, and now it's two mushrooms. Because it's, the second mushroom is, uh, sprung up, make it more, uh, sidewalk than, than, even in the beginning, um, but I, but I share the concerns that we, we don't have money to throw around like that. Uh, this is not ten, fifteen years ago when, you know, we had to stand on the ways so we didn't get killed by the money falling in. Uh, but here are some concerns that I have and I know that it's easy in the heathen moment, oh, we're going to get sidewalks, everybody raises, who wants sidewalks? Everybody raised their hand. Um, in the meeting was it made very clear that there are some landscaping that appears to be in the right of way and that's going to get torn out at due and it's going to have to be replaced at the owner's expense, uh, because I know we went through the road bush thing and, uh, I don't know if we're done with the road bush thing, so...
I think so. That's what we've been hearing a lot.
And that's one road bush, but, but there was one stretch there, it looked like a whole hedge row that looked like it was in the right of way, that's going to get torn out and I don't know if that was covered with the people, that they're going to have to replace that plus pay for the sidewalk. Um, the other thing is, can someone opt out if, you know, if they find out that it's, that it costs more than they want to pay, can they opt out?
Not, not an SAD, no.
Well, again, if you correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ward, sixty, sixty percent of the people...
Absolutely, they can file a counter petition and maybe kill the whole SAD, but once the SAD is approved, you can't opt out and say, well, I just do not have the sidewalk in front of me.
And just again, uh, Mr. Tressel, I think the average cost is about two hundred and ninety-one dollars a year and it could go up or down depending on the linear footage. But we did ask you to incorporate engineering, landscaping and all the other costs to come up with that, that fall part.
That's all included?
Yes.
For how many years?
Ten, ten years.
Ten years. The, uh, the other question that I have is, let's say someone says, uh, I got a brother-in-law that's in the cement business, can I have him put my sidewalk in?
I'm sorry?
If someone says, uh, I got a brother-in-law that is in the cement business, can he put my sidewalk in rather than the contractor that we're, that's going to get hired?
About once the SAD is done, like right now, if somebody wanted to put a piece of sidewalk in front of their house, they could, but once the SAD is done, it's a public project at that point. It's a public project.
Even if they design it, even if they say he can build it less expensive than it's going to cost the city, but he'll do it to the same standards?
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing, it's, it's, once it's a public project, because an SAD process has been completed, then it, it is a public process. Right now, anybody could go and, and the city could demand you to teach them, we want sidewalks in those areas and if you don't put them in, we'll do it. So, the ordinance already exists for that. So, if, if they wanted their brother-in-law to do it, they should do it before a city project gets initiated.
But even in those special assessments, who, we give them a date specific for the start, I mean, they, in...
Well, that's, that was on the repairs, right. We always go in the know that...
On the repair, we totally have to, I say...
Right, and we would say, either you fish this by this date or then the city's project comes through and we'll do it for you. So, whether we would include that now on a, on a, on a new construction, I just think you're going to have a lot of issues because if someone says, well, my brother-in-law's going to do it, but he can't get to it till next week and our contractor's coming through this, you know, I mean, it just, it, it could be very problematic.
Okay. And if someone sells their house before the ten years is up, this...
Most, most lenders require, when you sell your house, they require special assessments to be paid off.
They have to satisfy them.
Generally, now, you can negotiate, buyer and seller can negotiate and say, well, okay, I'll agree to pay this and, but you deal with that closing because the lender doesn't want that to be a lien against the property when they come in with their mortgage. So, typically, it's resolved at closing.
Okay. Um, last point that I'm going to make is, I tend to agree with Don on this, especially since this is, this has grown and we really don't have a plan. I mean, it's, it's, it just seemed to visit us without any kind of a structure, structure to it. It's like somebody had a great idea and it's, you know, like the Judy Garland movies, you know, you get the, you get the sheets and I'll get the chairs and we'll put on a play, you know? Uh, I'm, I'm a little nervous about myself.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lawrence and Mr. Lance, oh, thank you, Mr. Lance.
Uh, yes, how about the people who already have sidewalks, are they, are they included in the assessment?
No, if they have sidewalks, they wouldn't be in the SAD.
All right, all right. The, the purpose, I believe, on this project is safety and security of the, of the children and the people who walk in the synagogues during the weekends and they walk in the road, that's dangerous. And they're willing to, to have an assessment, so, why, why deny the safety issue of the, of the couple hundred families?
Uh, it's Mr. Moss and Ms. Seymour than Mr. Fercassi.
Yeah, you know, I see, I, there definitely merits to what Mr. Fercassi says, without a doubt. Um, I weigh that on the opposite side of the spectrum with, you know, this is some of the most stable, this is one of the most stable neighborhoods in the city, the fastest growing area in the city and, um, you know, it almost goes back to, and these, and this community is obviously the walking community in certain parts of the week and it goes back to the, to the synagogue that we put in that strip mall. The reason we kind of took extraordinary circumstances in approving that and allowing that to happen was because this community is not going to be moving anywhere, it's pretty much set here. So, if, if it's a concern of this community that, you know, they need a safe and vibrant area and they're already there and they're willing to go forward with the process to say, you know what, I will take this assessment, um, I would be willing to support it. However, my concern also goes back to what Mr. Fercassi said, is that I want to make sure that the process is followed to a T with those five resolutions and, and get an expectation of what's the timeline of this project. Like, you know, we've proved, we've proved tonight to apply for the grant, I want more, you know, this really did spring up and I, I just kind of want more clarity of what are the next steps and it's not just for our benefit, I think the community and the residents need to know exactly what to expect, that, you know, we don't approve the grant tonight and there's sidewalk construction beginning by the end of the week. And I, I think there is kind of that miscommunication that that is happening.
Definitely misinformation.
So, I see, I do see merits to this project moving forward, but not until I'm at a comfortable part where every single thing that the city requires of us to do to make this go forward is being sabotaged, including, you know, that list of, that Don brought forward.
Ms. Seymour.
Thank you. Uh, one of the, one of the concerns besides the trees and the, the plantings that people will have to tear up to do to have this done, was that there's something about the drainage and the, the underground stuff that there's a lot of tearing up to get, uh, I mean, not using the right terminology, but the, the, um...
Maybe sprinkling systems.
Sprinkling, well sprinkling systems, but also the, our system, our system of...
Sewer drains.
Sewer drains, right. That, that, I mean, we evaluated the cost of that. But, but one thing, one thing puzzles me here. When you move into a neighborhood and you know there's no sidewalks, you've taken that upon yourself to have a place that doesn't have a sidewalk in front of your house even though these people on either side or across the street might have it. So, all of a sudden, it's become a problem, but, I mean, if you move in and there's no sidewalks, do you just expect the city to put it in? I, I'm puzzled by that because some people will move there a long time and all of a sudden now it's a problem. It, it's just, it's puzzling to me.
I can respond to that in, in what I know from having fought at Thompson School, the issue of sidewalks, particularly in the winter with the kids walking to school after a heavy snow, has, has been there...
Forever.
At the sixty.
Forever.
Yeah, so it, it's not really a new thing, but no one acted on it until now, apparently. And the other thing I would add is, remember when we did the special assessment in Cranbrook? And there was an issue with sidewalks only on one side of the street and the people that didn't have the sidewalks on their side of the street were kind of mumped and the people that had the sidewalks and had to have the special assessment weren't too happy about, the people across the street, I'm paying for their sidewalks. So, this seemed to be more equitable, uh, in having sidewalks on both sides of the street, uh, because that's part of the double mushroom here, um, when, when this, this came about. But Mr. Fercassi is next.
Uh, well, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Lance that, that safety has to be a, a major responsibility of the city, uh, but at the same time, you know, roads are safety hazard the way they are as well. And, and, and I was just, when you're talking about walking in the street, I, I, when we had the synagogue down the street from my house on Monterey at the end, uh, nobody cleaned their sidewalks, so they walked through the street because the city taught it.
Right.
So, you know, it was, it was in reverse, so, you know, I mean, we're just going to shovel the sidewalks out of there. It snows.
That's something we could do.
Ms. Lawrence, I think you were next.
It's just I want to reiterate that, we follow the process and Jim, whoever, to me, it sounds like we jumped the gun and made promises that we shouldn't, that we kind of rail that in because I think the safety issue and I've had my sidewalks repaired and I understand that and I've fought into a community and had sidewalks because I wanted them. But I want to make sure that we're always more communicating with our residents that we're meeting their expectations, we're giving them the best possible information. So, that, that, that's just a concern of mine because I know there are people that I spoke to, they feel that it's going to happen.
I think it sprung out of the non-motorized pathways that we did over there. Anyhow, um, we're only talking about a grant application deal, so is there anybody to object to having this on the seven o'clock consent agenda? Hearing none, this would be on the seven o'clock consent agenda. Finally, we have a request to amend the, tell them, this is pretty easy, it's a technical adjustment, if you read the backup. Tell them I put the wrong name down, it's related subsidiary on their application, so we need to go back and kind of prove it. I'm giving you the short version, I, if everybody understands it in the interest of time. Uh, is there anybody that'd object to this going on the seven o'clock consent agenda? All right. We then have two people who wish to speak under communication, Mr. Jones first. We ask you for brevity if we have a seven o'clock meeting, if you want to take the floor.
Do I have five minutes?
You have five minutes, sir.
Okay.
If you can say it less, we would appreciate it because we have people waiting in the other room.
Uh, and I'm sure you guys have all got my package of proposals and ideas. Um, this is one that someone to go over and, uh, just review, just so that you guys have food for thought because I understand, uh, on the twenty-fourth, there'll be something similar to this type of discussion on public pages. Okay. Project Queens, uh, Project Queens Week Mission Zero Prime Eight Mile Border Stabilization Effort. The Avon border presents an endemic and dubious set of concerns to all the surrounding suburban residences that are facing Detroit. Times are tough and economic depression sets the tone for rising criminal behavior. Southfield City stands as a valiant knight in view of the rallying ogre of chaos presented by the plight we face in the Detroit city limits. This is an unfortunate state of affairs, yet be that as it may, there is no quick fix, but some mutually beneficial, both short and long-term solutions are available. Project Queens Week Mission Zero Prime Eight Mile is a vision for the reasonable understanding that the calamity in Detroit was due to a long history of corruption and mismanagement of resources and that due to the fact that crime essentially cannot be totally eliminated but managed or controlled is, and is in response to the destitution and economic depravity of an area. Do I oppose a variety of mutually beneficial prospects? For instance, at and around the Northland Shopping Center, does, uh, the majority of the youth from Detroit gather and due to the lack of productive activities within the confines of Detroit, many of them are seeking outlets from life stresses beyond their control and the plain lack of opportunities. These realities are not their fault nor did they create the conditions they were raised in or set upon for the habits they may have developed along the way. The usage of marijuana or alcohol around the perimeter of the mall at best should be no more than a tickable offense. Jailing persons for such offenses bobs down the system and ties up officer time and activity from handling emergency calls, slowing down response time for higher priority encounters. Issuing tickets once paid can generate revenue through punishable offenses that are minor and in addition if warrants are posted to non-payment, community service to keep Southfield clean is the most reasonable of options upon processing of such individuals. On a more progressive note, there are a variety of available real estate vacancies for the housing of a center at or around the Northland Shopping Center for the express purpose of a multiple platform facilitating the combination of recreational activities including sports and employment, locating venues, i.e. an unemployment center where youth can be connected with junior college enrollment, military recruitment for all branches, GD classes and testing and guidance centers to develop job skills with classes that deter drug use and promote safe sex. The aim of the law enforcement agency in the city of Southfield is obviously to maintain the safety of its citizens and provide a hospital environment for businesses to conduct their activities. However, law enforcement resources are limited as well due to today's present economic crisis. It is, it is seems logical that many of the youth surrounding the Northland Shopping Center could be trained and given employment by a city-sponsored security firm or inclusive entity that with its own liability coverage could assist the law enforcement agencies in monitoring and deterring potential criminal activity around the Eight Mile border by putting these youths to work for Southfield's interests. Alongside as a component with that, within that very same entity, there could also be a department that works with the Parks and Recreation, the Maintenance Department whereby youths are employed to keep every facet of Southfield immaculately clean and at the same time providing employment to disenfranchised youth. This program or entity cooperating with the city can also function as a platform for persons whom having been issued a sentence of community service can complete their obligations and possibly retain an employment opportunity in either the security or custodial branch of that facility. In clothing, it is a sound judgment for the effort to be acted out as some vacant business inside the Northland Shopping Center, i.e. JCPenney or nearby, as to be in close collaboration with Streamline Communications to assist SFPD at the Northland Shopping Police Precinct to consolidate and coordinate activities with maximum efficiency. I, Mr. Jones, do solemnly commit myself to such measures and would appreciate any and all recommendations and assistance whereby I can cooperate with whatever authorities to evoke such efforts. I, having been one, one such disenfranchised youth, having dealt with the difficulties of the streets and the penal system nationwide, have a wealth of wisdom and tactical skills to draw from to catalyze and maintain the functionality of the above stated agenda. If a meeting can be scheduled for me to engage Police Chief Hawkins, Fire Chief Riley and Sergeant Porter of the Northland Police Precinct and along with the city planners or other sponsors, uh, private or corporate donators in collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Department, having the appropriate team assembled and enough philanthropic donated revenue, I can put my experience in, build to be of service to my community to use productively effective... to my community to use predictably, effectively and in real time. I also had an idea that I wanted to do a game day and I have, uh, the, the rental packet, they wanted to help me figure out how to do that. Um, also I had that in there, what I sent you guys, so.
Your time is up.
Okay. Let me make a suggestion, real quickly. The materials that you send us are, it's very wordy, I think if you can break up some bullet points, it would be much, not only more readable, but if we wanted to, you know, move this forward, it would be easier for us to kind of communicate what you want, uh, to, to city staff.
Okay, well, I mean, I've-
That fair?
I've been trying to adapt and mold my agendas closer, closer to what you guys are trying to see.
Bullet points, that's probably the best way for us to get information.
Particularly the state, you have bullet points rather than just a long narrative, we can, uh, uh, read that.
Um, in the interest of time, I want to move on please, um, uh, next we have Mr. Harmon Dunster. Uh, Mr. Dunster, your name and address for the record.
Harmon Dunster, nineteen oh oh one Williams Street, Southville, Michigan. And because we get started at seven o'clock, I've, uh, asked to be moved to the next meeting.
I can move you to the, uh, next agenda.
Fine.
Thank you very much.